All right, we'll call to order this city council special meeting agenda for Monday, June 23rd, excuse me, 13th, 2022 at 5 o'clock PM. Roll call and certification of quorum. I'll certify. We do have a quorum present. Both, all members are present with the exception of Member Berry and Member Owens. Both will be absent from the chamber the rest of the evening. Moving forward in our agenda, we have citizens' comments. I believe we have one citizen that has signed up to speak at the workshop. Mayor Pro Tim, would you present that?
Thank you, Mayor. First one and only one up is Mr. Jimmy Davis. You give your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Jimmy Davis, 5004 Combson Street, Pearland. Gentlemen, I appreciate you taking the time to look at alternative ideas on how to properly handle wastewater being produced here in Pearland. I've heard the horror stories about Longwood flooding, and that's not sustainable. I have to ask, though, looking at the map on Slide 12 of the Freezing Nichols presentation that's attached online, it appears that much of Berry Rose is in flood zone AE. They say all alternatives mitigate the risk of flooding at Berry Rose. Right now, how much are they mitigating for? Are they mitigating for another Harvey? Harvey plus a certain number of inches? Or less than Harvey? We need to be realist when we consider future flooding events. There are lots of indicators that it's going to get worse. None of us want to think about another Harvey and definitely not something worse, but we need to be prepared. I look at the amount of area at Dixie Farm Road that is in flood zone AE, and it's much less. Is there any risk at the Berry Rose side of losing access to some of the land that is part of the John Alexander Family Limited Partnership that would shrink the footprint we have to work with? Have you considered environmental impacts to neighborhoods around the Berry Rose facility? I live in Corrigan, near Centennial Park. I can tell you, whatever's being done at John Hargrove, it's having environmental impacts at our home. My wife this spring had to come in from enjoying our patio in the evening because it stunk so bad, it made her sick at her stomach. We're only a couple miles away from John Hargrove as, as the crow flies. Looking at the maps of the two facilities, it appears there are a lot more residences near Berry Rose than the Dixie farmland. We hope, though, coming from John Hargrove is only temporary. Are you prepared for years of complaints from residents around Berry Rose? Looking at the presentation, it appears it's all planned to eventually provide 6.5 million gallons per day of treatment. How much are we losing by shutting down Longwood? Do we need to plan out 6.5 million? Or is 5 million a day good? When do we expect to need that much capacity by? And would a new plant in the Dixie Farm area, area possibly better service future expansion that may come out that way? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Moving forward in our, in our agenda, we'll move to item number four, which is the presentation. Presentation by Freezing Nichols Incorporated on the city's 2022 Water Reclamation Facility Consolidated Study. With that, I'll turn it to staff for staff report. Before we do, is it warm in here for everyone? Things a little warm in here.
So, we're working on that.
All right.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're happy to be here to, in this special meeting, to present the results and recommendations from the 2022 Water Reclamation Facility Consolidation Study. This study stemmed from last June when an alternate project was presented to the city in an effort to reduce the near-term rate impacts of the Berry Rose and Longwood projects. Additionally, concerns were raised regarding the resiliency of the Berry Rose site and the treatment technology being proposed. So, we brought on Freeze Nichols to conduct a study to vet alternatives and address all these concerns. So, after seven months, countless hours, we are here with the results. I'm going to let David with Freeze Nichols thank his team, but I want to thank the folks with the city that worked on this effort with us. Robert Upton, Skipper Jones, Jamison Appel, and Kua Wen, and many others for all the efforts they've put into this and the results that are coming out of this study. The study's been a good and worthwhile time spent to make sure that we have a, the best project, the most optimized project to move forward, providing the best value to the city both in the short term and the long term. So, a couple of items before I hand it off to Freeze Nichols to kind of set the stage with the presentation is, first of all, as we all know, cost are up across the board. So, when we look at cost tonight, because of inflation and supply chain issues, those are the numbers we're looking at today instead of the numbers we were looking at seven months ago. Second is, this is a very complicated project, and we're walking through five alternatives. So, it's going to take about 30 minutes to get through this presentation. And the presentation is laid out to help us kind of gain understanding as we walk through the presentation and help, because I know everybody read the 50-something-plus pages of the study. So, we'll, we'll walk through this. We'll gain understanding as we get through it. So, if we can try to hold questions to the end, we'll have plenty of time to discuss and answer any questions. So, with that, I get to do the background slide. I think it's because only Skipper and myself were here when we started working on the consolidation of these plants. So, back around 2010, early 2010s, we recognized the need to decommission Longwood. Its location is very flood prone, has flooded multiple times. There's really, there is zero room for an expansion or a major renovation of that site. And based on the age, its condition, it does need significant renovations and future potentially expansions. So, at that time, we developed a project, a long-term project to divert flows from, from the Longwood plant, mostly to Berry Rose, but some to the JHEC plant. And then, we started several of those projects. We diverted some from the Green Tea area through the Riverstone Ranch Development to Berry Rose. Others from right around here in City Hall, we diverted those to, to JHEC. And that series of projects was planned to culminate with a project to turn Longwood into a pump station and pump into Berry Rose. So, in 2019, as we were developing the plans for the Berry Rose expansion, we brought McCarthy on board as the construction manager at risk with the plan to work with the designers through final design to provide cost estimates, value engineering, constructibility reviews, all the things to make sure we optimize the design. And then, in 2021, when we couldn't come to an agreement on the final design with our design team, we ended that contract and went through a new RFQ to start the design. And that's at the point when, June of 21, when we were presented with an alternate project that prompted this study, which we started in October 21. So, we're here today with the results of that study and the recommendations. And so, at this point, I'll hand it off to David Munn with Freeze Nichols for the remainder of the presentation.
Great. Thank you very much, Trent. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I also appreciate the opportunity to represent my team. As Trent said, this is a culmination of thousands of hours over the last several months. And so, we're all excited to be here tonight. Trent did a great job of setting up the background. What I want to do for the rest of the evening is to go over kind of an overview, a big-picture view of our study, go through the top five alternatives that we evaluated, the process by which we evaluated those alternatives, and then finally, a summary of what we believe is the best overall value and our unanimous recommendation. So, backing up a bit, we looked at many, many different alternatives. We then did a deep dive into both cost and non-cost factors for just the top five, which I'm going to present tonight. All the alternatives that we looked at sought to accomplish roughly the same goal, which is to decommission Longwood and consolidate that flow at one of three locations. Either your existing Berry Rose facility, your existing JHEC facility, or a new site where there is currently no development at all on the site at the intersection of Dixie Farm and Pearland Parkway. In addition to the location of where we were consolidating the flow, we also looked at various alternatives for getting from point A to point B, and various alternatives for phasing in the ultimate treatment capacity. So, the project team included Freezing Nichols, our subconsultant plumber, the C Mar, McCarthy Building Company, and most importantly, many members of your staff, including representatives from Pearland's engineering, management, and operations staff. We also got supplemental support from your finance department and your property acquisition department. So, a lot of thought, a lot of support for this project. The overall project team, we wanted to make sure that we are providing a balanced and structured assessment of these alternatives. One of the first things that we did was to identify some overarching goals that we're going to serve as our guiding light for this project. They were to address the concerns over the condition of the aging Berry Rose facility, to decommission and then consolidate the treatment from the Longwood facility, to phase the project to mitigate the near-term rate impacts while also minimizing lifecycle costs. Now, later, you're going to see that those last two goals become in conflict with each other on this project. And so, there was a lot of consideration of striking the right balance between those last two. There were some other things that, while not overarching goals, they were important. So, we called them additional considerations. Those include investing in a resilient, sustainable site, minimizing short-term investments and infrastructure to be discarded, considering long-term water reuse implications, and minimizing public impact due to construction activities. You're going to hear me refer to these goals often tonight. We started every meeting kind of refreshing ourselves on these goals because they were those guiding principles, as I mentioned earlier. In addition to the goals, we also had planning criteria, which kind of established the rules of the road to ultimately achieve an apples-to-apples comparison between all the alternatives. I'm not going to go through every single one of these, but I will pick out a couple examples. One being the flow projections. All alternatives accommodated the same set of standard flow projections, which we took from your wastewater master plan. We also standardized on sequencing batch reactor technology. There was a consideration of other technology types, but SBR was chosen for the basis of the study for a number of reasons. Probably most predominantly, your two other flagship plants utilize SBR technology, and so, there is advantage to standardizing around it. And in the back of your report, you'll find a more detailed analysis for our assessment of treatment. But for tonight's sake, to keep it simple, I'm just going to focus on SBR.
David, if you would, just explain SBR real quick.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much. So, sequencing batch reactor, it's a treatment process in which the biological treatment is combined with clarification, where you have, you know, almost one batch or one reactor where the flow goes in. You have your biological process, and then you allowed it to settle and decant over. It's, it's one of the, I think, common treatment processes used in the United States.
Is it also known as the membranes?
It, it is not. So, let me, let me focus in on that a little bit more. We did focus on another treatment process called a membrane bioreactor. That was the alternative. We compared membrane bioreactors, MBRs, to sequencing batch reactors, SBRs. You know, for those that don't use those terms every day, they can get a little bit of alphabet soup there. But those were the two that we focused on with a recommendation for sequencing batch reactors.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, with that, let's get into the alternatives a bit. And I will point out that we gave you a little cheat sheet. You know, even for those of us that were working on this weekly, every once in a while, we would get confused between the alternatives. We wanted to provide you a little assistance for those that, that are considering this tonight. I'm going to camp out on this slide a little bit, so let me kind of walk you through it. We're going to go through the various alternatives shown on the left-hand side of this table. We'll walk through where flow is consolidated, the length of force main necessary to consolidate it, and the treatment capacity, which in some alternatives is provided through brand-new treatment, and others rehabilitation of existing units or combination thereof. So, the first alternative, alternative one, has us taking flows from Longwood and sending them to the Berry Rose facility. And at that facility, we would build the ultimate plant on day one, a 6.5 million gallon per day plant, and demolish the existing plant that's there. Now, this alternative is the closest to the original project definition. It is a bit smaller because since that original project definition, staff continued to look for ways to optimize it through completion of the master plan and through use of that master planning model. Even at the start of this study, staff brought that ultimate capacity from 7.5 down to 6.5. Otherwise, this is very close to that original project definition. The next alternative, two, still has us taking flow from Longwood, sending it up to Berry Rose, but instead of building that ultimate plant on day one, we phase in the capacity, building 2 MGD of new treatment capacity and rehabbing the existing Berry Rose facility. Alternative three is one in which we take flow from Longwood. We send it through a force main that is approximately, I believe, 11 miles. And we send that to, temporarily to the JHEC facility. Now, JHEC has always planned to have a, another expansion, and we're just expediting that. We're expediting that expansion, temporarily treating the Longwood flows there. But then, in the coming, say, next decade, you're going to need those, that capacity at JHEC. And so, what we would do at that point in time is build what's called the Dixie Farm plant to intercept those flows from Longwood. This section of, I believe, 2.6 miles of force main would be abandoned. And then, at some point later in the future, near buildout or the year 2042, Berry Rose would also be decommissioned and also sent down to Dixie Farm. Alternative four is an iteration of that, where we just go straight to the Dixie Farm plant and build that in the near term, never going over to JHEC. However, like alternative three, in the future, near buildout, Berry Rose would also be demolished, and flows would be diverted down to Dixie Farm to achieve that consolidation goal. The last alternative, alternative five, is one in which we go back to Berry Rose. So, consolidating Longwood at Berry Rose, building a new facility. But instead of building that ultimate facility, we build only the capacity necessary for phase one, which is 5 MGD. So, with that, understanding of the alternatives, next, we'll walk through our analysis. And I want to start again with those project goals. Again, these were our guiding principles. This is how we structured our assessment. So, I'll be referring to each one of these on the next nine slides. So, the first goal was to consolidate treatment facilities. So, what we have on this slide, as you see over on the left-hand side, is the list of the five alternatives. Along the bottom, you have the year of operation, starting in 2022 and going out to 2042. We then show the number of treatment plants in operation for that year. So, for example, today, in eastern Pearland, you have JHEC, Longwood, and Berry Rose, three facilities. In the first phase, alternatives one, two, and five reduce the number of treatment facilities by taking Longwood offline. The other two alternatives, alternatives three and four, take a little longer to permanently reduce the number of facilities. You see, alternative three temporarily does that when you bring flow over to JHEC, but then you backtrack a bit to Dixie Farm, adding another facility. So, again, it's not until that last phase that you ultimately, permanently reduce the number of facilities. I know that's a lot to take in, a lot of detail there, but the short story is, some alternatives consolidate sooner than others. The next consideration was investing in a resilient site. So, a couple of things to note here. Number one is, in December of 2020, FEMA changed the definition of their floodway. That floodway extended further into the site, changing the project definition at that point in time. It should also be noted that this flight has, this site has partially flooded during Hurricane Harvey, and access into the site was difficult at that point in time. To bring it up to the same level of service, we'll need to build up that site, raising things above the current elevation. We would need to improve access into the site, and we would need more room outside of the floodway. Fortunately, today, there is property available that would allow us to do all that and achieve the same level of service as Dixie Farm or JHEC. The next goal was to address concerns over the condition of Berry Rose. So, parts of this plant were built in the 1960s. Later, there was an expansion in the 1980s. Some alternatives have this facility staying in service until the year 2042, which would mean a 75-year life expectancy for certain components of the plant. So, understanding the condition was very important. Freezing Nichols built upon a more detailed study that was done by a prior team. And then, also, ourselves spent a full day out there with operations staff going through the condition. And there were really two takeaways. Number one, your operations staff has been doing heroic things to keep that plant in service despite its age and condition. Number two, despite those heroic efforts, this plant still poses a significant operation and safety risk. So, we really see two options going forward. You either decommission it and build a new facility, or do a major investment into that existing facility and keep it in operation. So, like any facility of this age or vintage, we saw a number of things. Number one, there are structures that need to be either repaired or replaced due to corrosion. Likewise, electrical switch gear, which is dangerously corroded. There are portions of the basins that are overwhelmed and need to be expanded. And you also have some single points of failure, such as your oxidation ditch. So, major investment is needed if this plant is to remain in service. The next consideration is minimizing public impact due to construction activities. And this is going to be most apparent along the pipeline or the force main during construction. Some alternatives, such as one, two, and five, reduce this public impact by following mostly the drainage channel outside of the public right-of-way. Other alternatives, such as three and four, have alignments along major thoroughfares, such as Dixie Farm Road, Pearland Parkway, and Magnolia. And at times, because that right-of-way is congested, the new force main would have to be constructed below that existing pavement. So, what does that look like? So, in some cases, for example, along Pearland Parkway, you'll lose both lanes of traffic, and you would have to consolidate the incoming and outgoing traffic to, say, the right-hand side of the median. In other locations, where we're fortunate enough to have the pipeline outside of the paved area, we'll still likely lose a single lane of traffic in some areas, not only for construction, but also for safety. And this was something that our contractor brought up quite a bit. This is a major safety concern where we have the public and the construction activity in such close proximity to one another. Overall, up to nine miles of Pearland Parkway, Dixie Farm Road, and Magnolia Parkway will have traffic impacts during construction of up to 24 months. The next consideration was minimizing short-term investments and infrastructure to be discarded. So, so what do I mean by that? So, an example would be a force main or a pipeline that's expected to have 75 or even 100 years of life, constructing that, and then abandoning it after, say, 10 or 15 years. Some alternatives have higher, I call them throwaway cost or sunk cost than others. Alternatives one and five really minimize those costs, while alternatives three and four have greater throwaway costs. And alternative three, at least, that's largely driven by the 20-inch force main that's discarded after about 10 or 15 years of operation. I'm now going to get into the cost-related goals. These were very important, as you know. For this reason, we had our designated builder, McCarthy, do all of the detailed cost estimating. We provided them with unit process sizing, conceptual designs, layouts, and alignments. But most importantly, they leveraged a 200-page cost model that they developed for the original model to provide the basis for each of these alternatives. The O and M cost that I'm going to present later were based on a evaluation of years of actual operating costs for the city of Pearland and detailed discussions with your operations staff. So, in this alternative we're showing, or excuse me, in this slide, we're showing the five alternatives along the top. five alternatives along the top, and for each one, the near-term cost, near-term meaning phase one, the next five years, but not any costs from the outer years. So what we're presenting here are the construction costs for new treatment, the conveyance costs to get from point A to point B, and then those critical repair costs at Berry Rose that I mentioned earlier. These were all provided by McCarthy. F and I then did a just a rough estimate of 20% for the professional services, and your property acquisition team helped provide some of the expected property acquisition costs. That brings us to a bottom line capital expenditure for the next five years. But most importantly, you're probably going to want to look at these rate impacts. The way we achieved those was we took that bottom line capital expenditure, we gave it to your finance department, and they plugged it into your existing water and sewer rate model. A couple of important things to point out about this, these are only the costs for this project. So they isolated just these project costs. There are no other rate impacts presented in this table. The other thing to point out is that this is the cumulative rate impact over the next five years. The third thing that I'll present here is that the spread that we see between the most expensive option, alternative one, and the least expensive option, alternative three, is 3%. The spread between other alternatives was as little as 1%, again, cumulative, over the next five years. As I mentioned, that last slide only showed costs for the next five years. We did want to look further out than that. So this slide shows the capital expenditure for the life of the project. But this doesn't include, there's no inflation here, there's no operating costs, this is just capital expenditures. And so we're showing each alternative as a different color bar. So for example, alternative one, we see the near-term cost, and then we can add the 2035 cost and the 2042 cost together to get the total capital expenditure over the life of that alternative. And we do that for all five alternatives. Now, as it worked out for this project, because of some of the conveyance, because of some of the phasing, because of some of the throwaway costs, a number of factors led into this. But for this project, one thing to observe is that the alternatives, such as one and five, that have the highest near-term costs, ultimately have the lowest total capital expenditure, while the alternatives, namely alternative one, that has the lowest near-term cost, has the highest total capital cost. Now, that's just capital expenditure. The other thing that we want to look at to satisfy another project goal is minimizing lifecycle costs, which on top of capital expenditure includes operating cost, major rehab cost, and inflation. So there's a lot of twists and turns on this table. You don't need to understand every single one of them. But what I would point out is the relative difference, that $40 million spread between the near-term cost as compared to the ultimate spread after a life cycle of 20 to 25 years, which is closer to 250 million. Now, that's made a little more dramatic because we do have inflation in here. We feel that it's important to look at not only this slide, but the prior slides before that to get a balanced understanding, you know, considering both the near-term impacts to rates, the total capital expenditure, and then the total lifecycle cost. I'm going to circle back to these numbers again later in the summary, and so I'm going to move on at this point in time. So let's now take and summarize, you know, all of those goals and analysis that I presented in the prior slides. So again, we had our guiding principles. We had these goals that we looked towards. They're all important. On the next summary slide, I'm only going to show five, though. Reason being that for four of these, all alternatives accomplish them equally. So there's no real differentiation for comparison's sake. So again, they're all important, but for the point of comparison, I'm going to focus on five, which we show on the far left-hand side of this table. Show our five goals and considerations, the objective criteria that we use to measure that goal, and then we have our five alternatives, and then the ranking for each of them. As usual, green is good. As you trend towards red, that's worse. For example, in alternative, or excuse me, in terms of goal number one, alternatives one, two, and five tie for first place because they consolidate or reduce the number of facilities the soonest, after only four years. Alternatives three and four take longer to permanently reduce the number of facilities, and so they're ranked lower. Next important alternative, circling back to those rates we saw earlier, one of our goals was to mitigate rate impacts. We see that the more expensive near-term alternatives, namely one, at five, and four, have a higher impact, while the less expensive alternatives have a lower impact, but only by as much as, say, or by as little as 1% over the next five years. So in all cases, that's less than one percentage point difference per year when comparing one alternative's impact the next. Other thing that we want to balance that consideration with is the total lifecycle cost. Here, we're showing them without inflation. And again, we see that those alternatives that have the higher initial cost actually have a lower lifecycle cost. And so there's a payback for that investment that you're making. The first consideration we want to highlight again is the impact to public during construction activities. This is simply measured by the length of the force main along major thoroughfares or through neighborhoods. As I mentioned earlier, those alternatives, namely one, two, and five, that stay out of the public right of way by sticking to those drainage channels, are going to have a much lower impact as compared to alternatives three and four, which go along Pearland Parkway and Magnolia Parkway. The last one, and I'll summarize the alternatives again after I get through this, but the last consideration is minimizing the short-term investments to be discarded. For example, those treatment basins that are built but only used for 20 years, or a pipeline that's built but only used for 10 years, or relatively new pavement that's destroyed during the reconstruction or the construction process of the conveyance. Those are all examples of these short-term investments discarded before the end of their useful life. So here, alternative three ranks the lowest. This is largely due to that 2.6 miles of force main that's abandoned after about 10 or 15 years. So those are our five goals and considerations that had the most weighting on our decisions. I'll let you guys look at this for a moment while I kind of remind everybody about what the alternatives are. Again, you've got that cheat sheet in front of you. Alternative one is where we take flow from Longwood, send it to Berry Rose, and we build that ultimate plant immediately. Alternative two is where we take flow from Longwood, send it to Berry Rose, but instead of building that ultimate plant, we phase in the capacity. We build a two MGD treatment facility and rehab the existing facility. Alternative three is the one where we go from Longwood temporarily over to JHEC, and then later intercept those flows at Dixie Farm. Alternative four is where we go straight to Dixie Farm. And then finally, alternative five is where we take flows from Longwood, we go to Berry Rose, we build a new plant, but we build the minimum necessary for phase one, and we still are allowed to get away from that antiquated oxidation ditch. So that's our summary. Let's now get to our recommendation. I'll say that this is Freez and Nichols' recommendation and our professional opinion, but it was also the unanimous recommendation of our project team, including our contractor, your operations, engineering, and management staff. So we recommend alternative five, in which we take flows from Longwood, send them to Berry Rose, and build a new treatment facility, but only the minimum capacity needed for phase one, deferring the later expansion for another day. We recommend this because it ranked highest in minimizing public impact, minimizing throwaway costs, and consolidating treatment plants early. It was not the least expensive alternative in the near term. There were less expensive alternatives, but because of a $20 million investment, over the next 10 years, you'll save over $100 million. The spread in the impact to rates was 2%. And so over the next five years, that's less than a 1 percentage point impact difference as compared to this alternative and the lowest cost alternative. There's more benefits. Number one, by pushing off the ultimate expansion of both Berry Rose and JHEC, you give yourself more opportunity to later right-size the capacity of those treatment facilities. As you see how development builds out, or you see the success of your INI, your inflow and infiltration program, perhaps you can further minimize the size of those treatment plants ultimately and save even more money. The last thing that I'll say before opening up to questions is this study achieved its purpose. If you consider the recommendation, where we were at the start of it, we've reduced the overall cost, we've spread out costs and reduced the impact to rates, and we've identified a higher value alternative. So with that, our team would like to open it up for questions.
All right, we'll open it up to counsel for questions, comments, concerns. Anybody got something jumping out right off the bat?
I've had, I have some questions real quick. The 6.5 million that's needed, I guess that's additional capacity, or is that the replacement of Longwood, which, what's today, 2 million?
Yes, sir. It's, it's, it's the replacement of the capacity at the existing Berry Rose plus Longwood.
Okay. So that, the 6.5 is just replacing what we have currently?
The, the five replaces what we have.
So the additional, there's additional 1.5 that's needed?
For, for growth.
Somewhere in the, in the future for growth?
Correct.
Okay. So to, to one of our speakers' questions, I think one of the questions asked was, how do we know or when is that capacity really going to be needed? Obviously, some of it's a crystal ball as to when it's going to be needed, but what's, with this end-of-town quote-unquote really built out, what's driving the need for the additional 1.5?
Yeah, so I can point back to the wastewater master plan, which was the most scientific answer to the question, but it is a prediction. Based on that evaluation, it's expected that in the year 2042, which is build out, is when you would add that additional final 1.5 MGD. So you do have some time.
So under that scenario, we may never get to it.
There is a potential that you, there's certainly a potential, I can say, that that would, you could minimize that ultimate expansion, which is one reason why we like alternative five so much. It gives you that ability, and that goes for both Berry Rose and JHEC.
And the other piece of that, part of it being unpredictable, is the effectiveness of INI programs. You know, as long as we continue to invest in those programs as we should be, and we're starting to, you know, we, we see that that'll kind of hold the line on some of the need for, for growth.
So Trent, just for the public, I know we've got a lot of consultants in here, staff, but those that might be watching this, explain INI real quick.
So inflow and infiltration, that is when you see rainwater getting into your sewer, your wastewater system. So that may be because somebody's got a stormwater gutter off their house tied into their, to their, their cleanout, dumping rainwater in there. It's other places in the system where at manholes or at pipe joints, you've got cracks or disconnects in the system. So what we see is when it rains, you see a significant additional amount of flows into the plants that we have to treat. And you have to, you have to build your plant capacity based on wet weather flows, basically. So what you do with INI is you come in and you rectify all those situations. You can either, you know, replace pipe by pipe bursting or other methods. You, you come in and you recoat and you rebuild your manholes, and then you, you go through neighborhoods and you can smoke test to see where things are connected to the system that shouldn't be, and then you can close up those parts of your system so you're treating as much as you can during wet weather, only treating really sewage as opposed to rainwater.
So ultimately, if we find the INI or do an INI program and repair some of that, we may not get to the 1.5 because we're closing the gap on 5 million that we're using already. We may only need 4 million.
Correct. And just a little bit, you know, we're, we're starting to ramp that INI program up in the CIP, and, and the basis of how you approach that goes back to the wastewater model that David mentioned, that, that Freez Nichols completed for us a year, about a year or so ago. You, you can, you start at the plants, you see the plants that have INI issues, and then you start working back through your system. We put flow meters in manholes, and, and you monitor flows at your lift stations. And then as you work back through the system, you can find your areas that have the, the biggest INI issues, and then you break up your system and do a programmatic approach, starting with the kind of the worst areas first to address those INI issues.
Any other questions?
I guess along the same lines, I mean, our water rates are probably going up, and I think we've seen, both with, as the rates go up, usage tends to pull back a little bit, as well as the high-efficiency fixtures that are prescribed by the National Building Code are giving us, I guess, less to the plant. I'm sure that's factored in somewhat, but I agree with kind of the mayor's train of thought with INI and some other factors, we could see that. And then also on alternative three, is there any value, I know that force main from Dixie Farm to JHEC, is there any value in having that interconnect at some point in the future in case there's additional capacity at either one, being able to push or pull or push from either end?
So maybe I'll start with that one, and it can help me out where I, where I miss. One of the things that, that is also part of why we like five and the ability to right-size both Berry Rose and the JHEC plant in the future, is that with, with alternative three, we would be building, we would be expanding JHEC from six to eight almost immediately. So it doesn't give us that chance to right-size JHEC if, if, if we don't build that. And then the other piece of it is, we already have the walnut lift station, which we have the ability to send a half million gallons either to Berry Rose or to JHEC. So that's kind of our flexibility in the future. If one grows and we want to, we need to build out the two MGD at JHEC, and it grows beyond that, we can send a half million to Berry Rose. So I think we've, we've got some of that flexibility you're talking about built into the system already. I think the 20 MGD force main would carry more than that. So, you know, there, there would be a possibility of, of being able to use that for something else, but I think because of the redundancy we already have built into our system, it would be a minimal opportunity. Any other thoughts on that, David?
No, I was going to bring up the walnut lift station as well, but I, I think you hit, hit the nail on the head there.
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Right? House Member, Cousin, start at the end and come back.
Fair enough, thank you. So my question, we sat here in a CIP meeting a couple of months back on water rates, and the graphic showed a 12% next year, 29% the following year, 22 the following year. Did that include this, or is that over and above that?
So if I recall, I'll have to check with Robert, I believe that included the former projects, the, the Berry Rose and the, and the Longwood project as they were in last year's CIP. What we did with the numbers you see here today is we took that, we stripped all the numbers out for the Berry Rose and the Longwood projects, and then added back in for each alternative those particular numbers. So what you see here is just the impacts of these alternatives over the five-year period. So these aren't the only pressures on our rates. So those were the rates at the time. We've, we've done a couple of things, and we're continuing to work on things. So, you know, we've seen a little bit of that, I think, come down in, in the next year or so, but we've still got, you know, significant cost increases and pressures we're looking at. So I think, you know, we wanted to give this a look where you could look at it without all the rate from everything else, because there's other, you know, levers we can pull, other things we can work on there. But, you know, once we have a, a path forward here, we can build that into the CIP and continue to work on those rates. So yes, there's So yes, there's still additional rate increases above what you see here today. I don't know if that answered enough specifics with what you were asking, but we can definitely provide additional.
Yeah, it got me in the ballpark. So I mean, that effect, we'll probably be looking at a little bit more depending on what it shakes out.
Yes, sir.
With the rest of them. All right, then also, I happen to live in Green Tea. It looks like from these maps that are here, looks like it might be Dixie Wood. Is that the two neighborhoods that would be impacted if we go with 1, 2, or 5?
As far as the impacted, it's where, where we put the force main?
Yes, where you're, where you're.
So for the most part, we're going to follow Clear Creek. And then we would have to have some easements to cross through Green Tea. We've got force mains running all over Green Tea already, but, so we would need additional easements through there. And then there's a short segment through, I believe, a center point easement. And, and so that one, for the most part, the impacts on the public are very minimal.
Do we know where in Green Tea, kind of roughly where we cross the golf course?
Your backyard.
Not my backyard, but it's down the street.
You let us know where you live, we'll, we'll put it right there. No. We, we've done a route study and we've got a, basically kind of a ballpark area that we looked at. You know, I think we'd have to get into, further into our design to really nail that down. But, but you know, we're, we're going to look at how we can bring it through there with minimal impacts.
Fair enough, I just.
And then we'll, we'll also look at trenchless, trenchless construction as much as we can. You know, probably don't need additional hazards out on the golf course, but, you know, we'll, we'll look at, you know, alternatives where we minimize the construction impacts even in that area.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Kamkar?
Thank you, Mayor. David, you talked about, like, your guiding poles were treatment and conveyance and the balance between the two. Between options 1 and 5, are those, first of all, are those equally weighted, those factors? Or were they, was one more influential in the process than the other?
So we, we started off with nine goals, and we did recognize that of those nine, some had a little higher weighting. And so we called those our, our goals and then moved the others into additional considerations. We did not do a scientific weighting where, you know, one is 33% of the decision. We didn't get to that level. We kind of considered all of them in terms of the goals as, as a whole.
Great. And then, can we go back to your slide with the, some of the costs on there? I don't know, we'll go back to the one that's just, this one's fine. Is there a difference in headcount considerations in terms of what's needed? Obviously, this is all capital, object side and more project related, but there's obviously a personnel piece to this. Is there any acknowledgement of which one is more headcount intensive and departmental[803.87][803.90]intensive?
So those alternatives that reduce the number of treatment plants that you have sooner, reduce the headcount needs. And so those alternatives such as 3 and 4, that still have a higher number of alternatives further into the future, are going to have a higher headcount associated with them.
So in theory, let's call it 2, 3, and 4 are going to be the ones where we're keeping facilities in place. And then they also have the higher, let's call it capital cost element to that. And there's probably a higher associated but not direct HR slash headcount cost. Is that right?
It, it is. And, and one way in which we captured that, I'll say another way in which we captured it is we sat down with operations staff and talked to them about how they operate these plants and which plants require more, we'll call it attention. And they said the biggest criteria is the age of the plant. It's not even necessarily the size or location, it's more the age of the plant. And so in our lifecycle cost, we have built in a formula that increases the amount of dollars, which is, you know, specifically correlated also to the amount of manpower needed to keep those plants operating.
Councilmember, keep that, if you'll move to the next slide that had all this, all the costs, not, next one, and go ahead and fill out the blocks. Where is it?
This one?
There you go. Okay, thank you. Because on that one, it's got the lifecycle cost, which goes to your, your question real quick.
And I guess incrementally, and this is more for my benefit, the, the basis and the delta between 522 and 539, I mean, that's, that's 3% of cost. I mean, when you add the difference of 17 million over a number that gigantic, I mean, that's, I mean, that's almost rounding error. I mean, it's real money, but it's, you know, the, the scale is just different. The, just to round out really different, the difference between alternative 1 and alternative 5, you're essentially throwing away, can be thrown away today, starting on a new structure, a new facility. But the difference is going from a 6.5 MGD plant, day one or year one, in alternative 1 versus a 5. So it's really just the cost of an extra 1.5 MGD today or versus 20 years in the future.
Yes, yes, that's the biggest differentiation. And, and that cost savings was really tantalizing at first. You know, why, why not just go to the 6.5? Then there was the discussion and pointing out that, you know, if we minimize the phase 1 and give ourselves a little bit more capacity to potentially add in the future, it gives us that opportunity to, to right-size it. And so that's where, why we went with, you know, providing the minimum 5 MGD plant on day 1.
Just for the council's benefit and just for my, things I'm thinking about as we, we talk about this is the, the needs are not necessarily today. I think member Carbon made a great point. I, I work in land development and we go rate a mud and its facilities, and you start at 300 gallons a day for a connection, and then somehow you end up at 250, and all of a sudden you have more capacity. And you add that up over a certain number of connections, there is savings. The other piece though, and we, we're talking about that in the next few months, is we've got guys coming in like Sullivan Brothers and others who are going to do redevelopment in the areas. And, and they're in areas right now that's a vacant lot. There's literally no, no use there. But then we're going to go put 50 or 60 home sites. And, and that's one project, and that's not the biggest project. But you have the other ones like that, that D.R. Horton project that came online, that will be needing city facilities and others. So that's just where I'm going, is that there is a balancing act. I do think redevelopment is coming. I do think we will get a little more dense, I think we will have more users here. It just comes down to you pay now or you pay later. And right now, the, the pay now and pay later delta is about $17 million over time with a 1% increase in rate impact. So I mean, it really just comes down to pay the piper now or later, I guess. My two cents.
Yeah, Councilman Kamkar addressed a couple of things I was asking about. When you start construction, if we go with alternative 5, will Longwood be diverted immediately and shut down, or is that going to be phased in over time?
So after we construct the plant expansion and after we construct the conveyance, we would immediately bring over Longwood in my personal recommendation because of the risk that it, it currently poses.
This might be a question for Trent. This involves continuing with our plan for the JHEC facility. Does the timeframe coincide with the same time we would be constructing Berry Rose if we went with alternative 1 or 1?
As far as what we're doing at JHEC, so the expansion of 6 MGD is the project that's underway right now. And so if we went with 1 or 5, we would not make that final expansion to 8 until it was needed. So we'd have some time, just like with the Berry Rose basin, we'd have some time to see how development moves over the next 10, 15 years, how INI affects the system and, and see if, you know, we need the full 2 based on what the model's saying we'll ultimately need, or maybe it's 1 and 1/2. Or between the two basins, we can optimize those and use the, the walnut lift station to send half an MGD one way or the other. So it'll, that, that 1 or 5 allows us to really make sure we're right-sizing both plants in the future.
In the long term, from that perspective, if we ended up needing the 6.5 MGD, the cost per MGD would be better alternative 1 than alternative 5. And I think that's what Alex was talking about.
Remember what I was, I was just remarking really quickly. We're going to go look at that area beyond 35 with that new oiler project that's coming down the line, and we're probably going to go rezone, I have a feeling, those areas. And I think that just resonates more now that you need it right now and can you get a better value for MTD unit?
All right, thank you. Hernandez?
I guess, thinking the opposite of my fellow council members up here and something that the mayor had brought up earlier, if we did not, because these are based off of projections that we're going to need this additional 1.5 sometime in the future, but let's say that we are looking at this alternative 5, we can right-size versus alternative 1, just go ahead and put the capacity in now. If for whatever reason in the future we did not, excuse me, end up needing that, what, I, I guess that's a little bit unclear here. What would the anticipated overall cost savings over the, like, life of our system be if we just didn't need it versus sticking it in there and now we have it, but we don't need it?
That, that's a bit of a complicated question to answer because there's not only the capital cost, but then there's the operating cost. You know, I, I could go back to this slide and we could roughly compare alternatives 1 and alternatives 5. But, but I, I think to truly answer that question, we would need to maybe dissect it a little bit more, that, that wasn't a number that we specifically put our finger on. And so if, if we can, I'd like to maybe come back with that answer in terms of what the savings would be if we just ultimately don't expand the plant.
Yeah, because I think that, I think the theory is, where I look at that is if you fix, say, a million or a million and a half, let's say we have a million to a million and a half in INI. And that, that's, you know, and all of a sudden, we, you know, take care of that, and you may ultimately not need that million and a half. It's there, the room is there, we can expand it at some point in time in the future. But I think that's the point you're getting to is if we, because we need to fix the INI regardless. We need that, you know, rainwater needs to go where rainwater needs to go. It doesn't need to go into our sewer system. And, and we need to fix that anyway. So we may, we may lower our flows in, in, in the short term or in the midterm, where ultimately we know we don't need that, which obviously there's flow going there now, we have some new growth, we have some of the development that councilmembers are talking about, it could be used up by offsetting with INI, you know, over time. And so again, we won't know, but then we put off that million and a half, you know, into the future. So I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's exactly where I was getting at. And, and Trent, you've mentioned, we've been getting pretty aggressive with our INI program, correct? We've still got quite a bit of stuff that we can do.
So we're, I would say, ramping it up. We've got it, we've got programmed in the CIP for future years to, to get more aggressive than I'd say we've been over the past five years. To get a sustainable program where we're doing INI to a significant degree every year.
Okay. Do, do you have a ballpark of what you think the, like, amount that we could potentially mitigate going into the system would be over?
So I think I'd defer to our guys that run our wastewater model and maybe Robert, if they could, I don't know if they can quantify that right here.
We can come back to it.
During the meeting, but I, I know we've done some, you know, analysis of what we think we can bring it down, so we may be able to give an.
So let me, let me start off before Freeze and Nichols go ahead and get started. Councilman Hernandez, is that in 2019, 2020 is when we did our model, we broke it down into zones. Those zones we presented to you showing that several areas have very high INI in terms of gallons per foot type rating that is used to determine what is good, fair, poor. With that, we started last year in terms of doing more analysis into a specific area, dialing that down, figuring exactly where that INI is coming from. So that in the coming, coming later this year, early fiscal year, is to then go out and start doing pipe bursting, as Mr. Epperson stated, and start repairing manholes, looking in the Berry Rose area, then into the Longwood area. But we have several areas throughout the city, including the JHEC area as well. Those are continuing to be dived in. So it is a long-term project. We're estimating, estimated in the neighborhood right now is the budgets that you've seen in the CIP of about $4 million a year to repair and also repair manholes and to replace by pipe bursting the infrastructure underground. So it is a long-term process. To answer your question, I'll give you a theory that we did, an exercise back when we were trying to size the regional lift station at Longwood due to the INI that was out there and the aspect of trying to meet 4Q as required at a lift station. That means four times the average daily flow. That rated us about 11 million gallon lift station per day, working with Freeze and Nichols. Working with Freeze and Nichols to say, we commit to doing the INI, reduce the INI. Working with them is now taking it down to about a 7 million gallon per day, peak day, 4Q demand. That's how important the aspect of INI is. So that goes against peak day. So our wastewater plants are 4Q, meaning that if it's at 6 million gallons per day, we have to then multiply by 4 and be able to treat that during storm events. So that's to give you a small exercise. Now, it was a couple of years ago, but that's one to have in the back pocket that we like to share, is that by doing this exercise, by making the commitment to reduce INI and evaluate where it's coming from, those are the things we can help reduce. And that's how, what got us from the original proposal back early, early on when we first started this in 2016 at 8 and 1/2 million, getting us all the way down now to 6, 6 and 1/2 ultimate build-out.
So it's going in the right direction?
It's absolutely going in the right direction, sir.
They're all going in the right direction.
I think one thing to add, and it's, it's stating the obvious, but the, the Longwood and the Berry Rose basins are our oldest sewer infrastructure. So that's where we've got in, in the model showing the, the worst INI issues, so where we can make the most gains.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Just one quick one. Great presentation, graphics and everything, you guys did a great job. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Had a great team putting it together.
David, do you have any follow-up?
I, I have nothing else to add.
All right, staff?
So next steps, if, if council's comfortable with the study and the recommendation, is that we will go back out for a new RFQ to select an engineer to, to take this project through final design and move the project forward.
One, one quick question. The difference between this base and the previous, in the previous, we weren't replacing all of Berry Rose on site, correct?
Which one are you talking about, sir? Are you talking about the?
Right, case scenario number one versus the previous project. Previous project didn't have us completely replacing.
Yes, it was.
It was?
Yes.
Did it reuse some basins or it replaced everything?
Okay. So we were also looking back then, was that, was MBR, or membrane bioreactor versus sequential backractor, but it was still building a new plant?
That question just popped in, seemed like there was a difference there for me. Okay, got it. All right, guys, we appreciate the work here. I, I agree, I think we just, with those recommendations, we have a CIP workshop, a whole workshop next Monday. I don't know if you have.
That's on transportation and?
Drainage.
Drainage.
Transportation CIP update.
I thought it was our annual larger one.
I think the, oh, the wastewater, well.
Because it's starting at 4, going for two hours, I thought it was going to be our larger one. I know we were going to focus on a couple of areas.
Let's focus on those couple of areas. We, I mean, if, we, we can throw a couple of things in there that show what the CIP looks like with this as the preferred alternative.
I think what would be good, if I heard even member Coza mention, I don't know how quickly we can do this, but I think we need to have a, a complete look at what these alternatives do to the overall rates.
Sure.
As best we can.
Sure.
Even with the other pressures from water and other, other systems, because it, it's going to have, it's going to have an effect.
Yes, sir. So we do have adoption of the CIP coming up in July, is that correct, Robert? CIP adoption?
Yes.
So that's where we can, we'll, we'll modify the Longwood and the Berry Rose projects for this. We can, you know, I'll need to get back with our, our finance folks on the rate model to see how soon we can start, you know, sneak peek of that as we move into budget season. But we'll, you know, we'll start building the, or the next iterations of the rate model will take in this as the preferred alternative.
Very good.
All right.
Anybody got last minute? All right, then we'll consider this workshop of our council adjourned at 6:04.